Would be my pleasure. John DeGrace?
Present.
Dr. Gordon?
Present.
And the Green.
Yeah, she's here.
She's on the way up.
She's here.
Uh, Wanda Jackson?
Present.
Ed Powers is not here. George Simon?
Present.
Donna Tuman?
Present.
Kathy Weiss?
Present.
Alex Figueroa?
Present.
And Derso's here.
I'm Green.
May we be, we spoke, please?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we have a call. Thank you. Yeah, we did a surrogate there. All right, do you have a motion to approve this September 4th, 2018 minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries eight zero. Trustee Weiss, would you be kind enough to read quote from this camera?
Sure. I'm gonna go straight to resolve.
Please.
Resolve that Nassau Community College Board of Trustees approves the appropriation of $2,706,291 in equal amounts of revenue and expenses as follows. Is that reasonable?
No, just go to the bottom.
Just go to the bottom. Um, total of $2,706,291. Here's a whole list of various P, S, E, and G, and Trigen items.
Uh, do we have a motion to consider this item?
I'll move it.
Second. Mr. Figueroa? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero. Okay, we're gonna do second reading of policy 6800. So we're gonna, I'm gonna add this to the item, to this calendar. I'm gonna make a motion to Article 8, Section C 7, which was pleaded to allow for the consideration of four items that did not appear on the calendar. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
You need one.
Yep.
We need a second.
Mr. Derso. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Ms. Jackson, would you be kind enough to read, uh, number two?
Resolve that upon the recommendation of the Policy and Planning Committee at its meeting of September 4th, followed by the acceptance of policy by the Board of Trustees in public discussion, the Board of Trustees of Nassau Community College will accept policy 6800 procurement and that the same be subsequently incorporated into the policy manual of the Board of Trustees of Nassau Community College.
Okay. Do I have a motion to consider this item?
Motion.
Move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Any further? Okay, we did the discussion. Motion carries eight zero. Yeah, we're gonna go for number 22 on your document. Yep.
So this is, um, the first reading and an adoption of policy 2200, sexual harassment, sexual violence. We discussed this extensively in the Policy and Planning Committee meeting, at which I think almost everybody was there. The policy has been changed in order to meet new laws and regulations and bring the law into effect as of tonight, and we need to have the policy approved and applied tonight, as was discussed earlier. Um, there are lots of, there are lots of changes in that policy, so the board members who were at the committee meeting had a chance to look at all of the changes and also hear, um, how people will be informed about their policy. Different than what we've always done in the past, the committee is recommending to the entire board that we read it and we adopt it tonight because the law must only come as of October 9th. And our board policies on adoption of policies enables us to make exceptions to our first read and second read process. So having said that, do you want me to read the resolution?
Yeah, let's just read the resolutions, or put it into the record.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of the Policy and Planning Committee, followed by discussion and the first reading of the policy by the Board of Trustees in public discussion, the Board of Trustees of Nassau Community College adopts policy 2200, sexual harassment and sexual violence, and the same be subsequently incorporated into the policy manual of the Board of Trustees of Nassau Community College.
All right, do I have a motion to consider this item?
So I made the motion.
Trustee Tuman, and do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Green. Any further discussion on this? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero. Trustee Figueroa, would you be kind enough to read number five? It would be the resolve of this.
Okay. Oh. Resolve that the Board of Trustees accept the revocable letter of retirement of the employee who is subject of said agreement, subject to receipt by council to the College of a letter of retirement.
Okay, do I have a motion to consider this item?
Motion.
Do I have the second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries eight zero. We also have one more policy that, um...
It's one of your four items, but somehow it's not in print.
It didn't make it out to the print. So it's going to be on policy 3100.
It's policy 3100, news media relations as amended. So again, this is a policy that we discussed extensively in the Policy and Planning Committee meeting, and, um, it was explained that many, many, many changes were made in order to meet what we heard from various constituencies in the, in the community. I don't know if Dr. Keen wants to make any further comments about it.
Only that, uh, we have, uh, considered a number of, uh, areas of feedback. We've, uh, accommodated many of those and, uh, made various changes. I think that the policy now stands in a position, in a state that, uh, I recommend adoption.
Right, so would you like me to read the resolve?
Please.
Resolve that the Policy and Planning Committee herewith affirmatively recommends to refer as policy 3100, news media relations as amended to the board for discussion in the first reading at its board meeting scheduled for October 9th, 2018, and that the same be subsequently incorporated into the policy manual of the Board of Trustees of Nassau Community College after the second reading by the Board of Trustees in passing of the amendment by the Board of Trustees.
So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? The abstention motion carries eight zero. Report to the President.
As a result of the work that we did during the year 2016-17 on, uh, on the middle states accreditation issues, we formed a, uh, group at that time comprised of the Vice President of Academic Affairs, the Vice President for Academic Student Services, the Chair of the Academic Senate, the President of the NCCFT, the Chair of Chairs, and the President of the AFA. Uh, and, uh, as a result of the working of that group, we decided that it would be helpful to convene that group on a continuing basis, and we've been, we've called that group the Governance Council. Uh, the work of that group, uh, is to come together, to discuss important issues of the college, uh, and to try to provide some guidance. It is not a process that is intended to intervene in the areas of governance that are, that are the providence of the Academic Senate. Uh, the Academic Senate stands with its own bylaws and, and, uh, rule. Uh, the Governance Council recognized that one of the major issues confronting us is enrollment, as we all, uh, recognize, and specifically the adoption enrollment which affects the college. So last spring, we decided to hold a colloquium on the future of the college in the context of that, uh, major issue of declining enrollment. So we held the colloquium last Friday. The focus was on three general areas: attracting and enrolling more students, retaining students, and assuring that students can, uh, earn the, the, the degree ultimately. We're pleased with the outcome of the, the colloquium, and we will provide a report on the recommendations from the six sessions that were held during the day. Uh, we're very, very pleased to have, uh, Trustee Weiss and Trustee Figueroa attending sessions with us, and so, uh, uh, we'll, we'll provide that report, uh, shortly. Uh, we, we had an event on September 25th to honor Professor Hussein Emin, who retired five years ago. He's now given a gift of $25,000 to fund scholarships, uh, in the business department. Uh, and, uh, so we honored him by naming the business lab the Professor Hussein Emin Learning Center. And so we had a ceremony for that, and there's a plaque down by the room there. Uh, we're pleased that we could, could honor him. He was a dedicated professor for a very long, very long time. Uh, I want to invite, uh, all of the men of the trustees on the board to participate in the Men Who Cook fundraising event, uh, which is coming up on November the 1st. Uh, and, uh, you should come, you should bring your favorite dish that you cook all the time, and, uh, and let people taste it. Also invite your friends, uh, and have them come and, uh, vote for you and, uh, help to raise some money for the foundation. Uh, by the way, the women trustees, as well as, uh, women everywhere, are invited to this event, and so...
What was that date again?
Uh, it's November 1st. It's the Thursday, November 1st.
I'd love to come and watch you cook, but I have to teach that night.
You don't watch them cook, you just watch them serve.
That's right. I must say I've participated, well, actually I ended up participating in my cooking one year, but I've been to the event two years, and you can taste some excellent food there.
Yep.
Uh, the, there's also a lighting ceremony as a fundraising event, uh, called the Day of Giving, uh, over at Theodore Roosevelt Building, uh, on October, evening of October 25th, that's also a Thursday, uh, at which County Executive Lauren Curran will participate, and, um, you're invited to attend if you can do so. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so very much. Okay, we're gonna go to the speakers' left?
Before you do that, just two quick comments. Um, I was gonna comment on the colloquium that Mr. Figueroa and I attended. It was fascinating. Um, I wanted to compliment Dr. Keen, but also all of the presenters. Everybody who got up had so much information to provide, for everybody who was there. And I walked out of there ready to offer to teach one of the courses they talked about because it was such an exciting and informative event. The other thing was I read, um, on all NCC about something that Director of Public Safety Rodini presented at the Academic Senate, and I have to say, I was so impressed. We will eventually have electronic access system, so we talked about keeping out intruders. Um, parking lot safety he talked about, and the public safety officer training. And I think all of those in light of what's going on in the world are important things for everybody to know. So our faculty has been doing incredible things, and I wanted to thank the presenters.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to the speakers' left? Steph.
First of all, I want to double-triple down on what Kathy said about the colloquium. Being a part of it and, and coordinating one of the presentations, um, was just very gratifying to me. But, but being there and just hearing what people had to say and the way they said it, and, and the fact of the matter, what came out was that so much is going on here at Nassau Community College, um, uh, for students, and particularly with the subject of the colloquium, recruiting and retain, uh, retaining students. And, and, and the benefit of this colloquium is that this information has now been shared. And so if something's going on in one department that works, and will work in another department, that new department knows about that. And, um, we're moving forward, uh, to, to, to make sure that a lot of these great ideas are actually, actually implemented. My area was the marketing area, and I think this is essential for everybody to hear. We have a real opportunity to create the type of marketing department that this college needs at this point in time. Um, and we have a real opportunity to fund that department so that when we talk about recruitment and also retention, that we're gonna be making, uh, we're going to make significant steps, significant strides. Understand this: you bring in one student to Nassau Community College, one student who lasts two years, what we're talking about is $20,000 in income. So you send somebody out from the, uh, to do something a little bit different, let's say go to a street fair, somebody from admissions goes to the street fair, you pay that person $200, $300, that person sits there and gets one student, that's $20,000 that's coming into this college. There are so many initiatives that this college will start to take to bring in students in addition to the wonderful things that we are doing, and we have to start looking at that, and we have to create a marketing department where people have experience and success in doing these kinds of things. And so when you think about funding, marketing, understand those numbers, and it's gonna make sense for us to go from the $300,000 that we're at now to close to $1 million that Suffolk Community College spends. And that money, from my perspective, in terms of, uh, Suffolk Community spending $1 million, they're not fools. They're looking at their budget, they're looking at how they're spending it, and they're, and they're monitor, monitoring the effects. And so we need to put ourselves in the same orbit. The second thing, the men that cooks. I cooked my favorite dish for two years. That was my wife.
Oh, and where's the equity in that later mention?
That a violation of sexual harassment? We're just past it.
Uh, for two years, uh, and, and I cooked, and it's just a, it's just a wonderful, wonderful event, and it, and it raises, uh, some really great money. Um, and last but not least, the, uh, the policy, the 3100. The notion that, that you, uh, took some recommendations, you made an adjustment, and the policy is now where it should be, is just indicative of what's going on in this campus. We're listening, and we're doing, and we're reconciling. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, I would just like to, uh, comment on what you just said, Steph. Number one, I think you're right on the money. Uh, I would be happy to serve on a committee, basically, to talk about ways we can increase our enrollment, because today, uh, we, we had a rude awakening about the decline in the number of students attending Nassau for the last several years, and I think that's something that's so important. I will mention to you that every year, twice a year, I go back to my old high school as a, as a graduate, and what I talk about is not just my business that I'm in right, right now, but why it's important to go to Nassau Community College. And I think that's something we should do, and every one of us should spend some time looking at what we can do. You're the expert in this field, I'd be very happy to sit down with you, with anybody else from the board who'd like to participate, but I think it's, it's now that we have to do this, not later, because the funding is, is, uh, evaporating. It's evaporated, and it's very scary. So I commend you, and I will be happy to volunteer and work with you on that. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm just from, uh, Trustee DeGrace, I'd be happy to participate. Oh, my head's gonna be a little bit... I, I, I too. I spent forty years of my life in the nonprofit world, and one of the reasons why I wanted to be a trustee is because of that experience. It's heartening to, to hear the numbers that we're talking about, you know, 10% decrease in a moment which then gets tied in to our funding. Um, we need to do a much better job in, in actually going out to the different high schools all over. I know that, you know, my particular, uh, area is what is called the corridor, which is Freeport, Roosevelt, Hempstead, Uniondale, and Westbury. And I would imagine if we do the numbers, a significant number of the students will come to this college, who come from that community, and I think that it's incumbent upon us to do some outreach into there, to go into the high schools, to talk to the guidance council, to let them know that two-year colleges are really a good investment. Um, you know, I, uh, my daughter is in Baldwin, uh, and she is on top of the school, and she's gonna go to a four-year college, and God knows how much that's gonna cost her. And we're willing to put it up, but at the same time, uh, we need to go after those students who may not be clear about what they want to study, their four-year college or two. And let them know that this is an incredibly viable alternative to four-year college. Do your two years here, spend $5,000, $10,000 a year, as opposed to $40,000, $50,000 somewhere else, and then after two years, God bless you, go on to your four-year college.
I'm gonna take it one step further. Are we on here? I'm gonna take it one step further. This place, for so many students, should be the first choice. Okay? There are too many kids that go to four-year colleges, they either leave, they graduate, and they're unhappy for the rest of their lives, particularly when it comes to the career that they choose. You can come here, you can take courses here, you can be involved in programs here, and you learn about the careers that are out there that relate to what you like to do and what you wanna do. And then, and then you transfer to another school. And what are you doing? What happens for you? Well, what happens for you is this: number one, you've got a better chance to get into a better college than you would've gotten into when you were in high school. Number two, it costs you so much less, not only because you save money by coming to Nassau, but because there are transfer scholarships. And the biggest part, you get to choose the four-year school that's right to you, for you. That's just one piece. So my mantra is, here at Nassau, we need to let students know why this should not only be their, should be their first choice, and we have some ways that are doing it, we're working on it. The second piece of it is, that is so important, we have so many programs here, and this is where the marketing comes in.
Certificate programs, degree programs, or something like that?
That are here. We have to make the connection with what we're doing with, with those students out there who really should be here, and we're doing it now, but we just have to do it better. And, and, and that's where I think the marketing is gonna come in.
I think that the enthusiasm and the gusto that you share, and that, as reverberated with members of the board, is something that I think that you guys should pursue offline. You'll coordinate with, uh, President Keen, and everything that you said is absolutely true. We need to go back into the community.
All right, just to move this along, I have Mr. Buddey.
Mr. Tuan? Uh, Dr. Keen, time to move on to the school, 42 days. I hear you talking about, first, one very important thing, it's like the elephant in the room. Uh, I'm very worried about the New York State, State A, to the college, it's down to about 24. something percent. When the community college system was set up, it was supposedly 1/3, 1/3, 1/3. I'm also worried, because the, uh, county legislature has not made any increases in the past few years either.
Eleven.
Whatever. Okay? And, uh, the students are having to pick up the weight, and that is, I believe, and I submit to you, one of the problems with your enrollment. That it's going down. Students can see that other places, they may be able to do better. The idea of marketing the school is great, but you have to market all the way down into the middle schools, you have to show a reputation to the younger students that'll make them wanna come here. There's another problem that I'd like to talk about for a second. Uh, are classes in Narcan for students being given? Narcan is a drug that you can inject literally up your nose to stop people from overdosing. I don't know exactly how bad the overdose problem here is, but in the community in large, Nassau County, we're having far too many people die, and far too many people, weirdly enough, having two or three overdose problems in one day, and getting... But we need to reach out to the students to make sure that they are going to be able to complete their education. God bless them. And, uh, one other thing? About your sex harassment issues, I really wanna commend you, uh, speaking as a former sexual harassment, anti-sexual harassment coordinator for the town of West Bay, but I do want, once again, to make sure that the word is going out to students about problems with other students, problems in the community. You know, student, uh, staff problems, and all of these issues have to be, uh, addressed, as well as issues within the staff. Uh, with regard to the, um, looking after all issues, I would highly recommend you guys consulting with a fellow named Jeffrey Reynolds, who is the, Dr. Reynolds is the executive director of the Nassau County, uh...
Family and Children's Association.
Excuse me?
He is the executive director of Family and Children's Association.
Yes, he, he is now, and he is a great resource for our community, he can be a great resource for the school. Thank you very much for putting up with me. And good luck, and I'm very concerned, once again, about the ultimate issue of particularly the state, because last year, you, you guys each, all of you, deserve a gold star for what you did in this fiscal year by taking, uh, money out of your contingency fund and dedicating it so that the students didn't have to take, shoulder all of the lack of money from other locations. Okay? And you should all get Congressional Medal of Honor for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, we got a bonus in our paychecks. Yeah, sure. We're gonna go on to the next...
Have a nice evening, dear pleasure. Thanks for your time.
Richard Newman?
Good evening. Um, I'm Richard Newman, I'm, I'm the secretary of the NCCFT, I'm gonna try and channel my inner Frank Fercento.
Uh-oh.
Well, there, there were just three things, um, that I would like to... Well, the first one is something that occurred to me as we were talking about marketing, it's something I spoke to Dr. Keen briefly about at the colloquium. Um, there's a resource on campus, I think, that we have, that if we could figure out how to use it, it would be a wonderful way to put a face on the college. There are an awful lot of faculty and administrators who started out as students here, and who came back to work here precisely because of how much the college gave to them and they want to give back. And so I just thought that, just put that out there as an idea, something to think about. And how to use them is a whole different question, but I think it's something worth, is worth thinking about. Um, I was at the colloquium on Friday, and for the, and for the executives committee, I have been asked to say, it was, it was wonderful to see the faculty leadership and just representatives from across the college so closely focused on the questions of, of retention and recruitment. It's a kind of focus that I don't know that we've had quite in the past, and that was just really heartening to hear all of that information come out, but also to note that the leadership, of, of the, the elected leadership, of the faculty, the administration worked so closely together to make that happen. It's a kind of cooperation that we, we can build on, and it was the start of a really important conversation. Um, and lastly, I wanted to say something, we wanted to say something about the media policy 3100, um, because we were, we were really gratified at the way in which we were able to work together to come to the revisions, um, that, that we came to. We, I know that, that Frank Fercento raised some concerns early, early on with Dr. Keen, I think shortly after the first version was passed, so that we had been kind of thinking about these things for a long time. There were a lot of other issues that had to be dealt with, but the way in which Dr. Keen was responsive to the concerns of the faculty bringing concerns forward, and in the way in which the board was also responsive and, and receptive to those, to those suggestions, which is really gratifying for us, and it's a kind, I mean, as we all know, it's a kind of cooperation that is not new here, but it's, it's new in this time period, and that is emerging and getting stronger, and we just also want, you know, that's something that we all need to keep in mind, because we're gonna be hiring a new president, and that's something, that's something that we need to make sure that we carry forward to... we carry forward to whoever that person might be. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Okay. So, the next one, it's Capitol meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen at five p.m., followed by a full board meeting. The board will open public session between approximately six fifteen and six thirty, and assume public session at approximately seven thirty. I request a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries, meeting adjourned at eight ten. How are you? Welcome back.